Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today's date is Thursday, August 24, 2017. It's 8:30 a.m., and we'll begin today with roll call.
Good morning. Commissioners Antor.
Here.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Here.
Commissioners Breevy.
Here.
Polkowski.
Present.
Hennessy.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
Corndyke.
Present.
Mast.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Honstein.
Here.
Skaggs.
Here.
Stuck.
Here.
Talon.
Here.
Vonk.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Womack.
Here.
Chair.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move then to invocation and pledge of allegiance, for which I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce once again Doug Spord. He's the deputy director of our grant commission. He is also a lieutenant colonel in the Army Reserve as a chaplain. And he's agreed to come in and do the invocation for us this morning.
Let's pray. Lord God, our heavenly Father, we come to you this morning, your blessing upon this meeting and upon this county. May that which is done here this morning be pleasing to you. Help us put aside our pride and our personal agendas, for we are servants. We are servants to those who elected us. We are servants more than that, to you. And so we come to you asking for wisdom in the decisions that we make today. We also pray on behalf of the employees of this county that they will be just in their work and that you will bless them for their efforts. We think of the sheriff's department who are on the road today. They may find themselves in harm's way. Watch over them and their families. And now we take special time to pray for Tom Dempsey and his family. Be their strength during this time of struggle, this time of suffering. Be his great physician. Touch him in mind, body, and spirit. And we pray this now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan, and thank you, Doug. We'll move on to agenda item number five, which is two special order of business presentations. We'll begin today to get the annual update from the John Ball Zoo, for whom I will call on Peter D'Arenzo. Did I say that correctly? And if not, please correct that. I always...
D'Arenzo. That's all right, though. I'm used to it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. And, you know, I've been here about 18 months now, and I pondered about with my first meeting in this capacity. But so I thought I'd talk about the millage, what our new core values are, and then open it up to any questions. And the reason why I like to talk about our new core values is it's at the core of what we do and what matters to us. So first, the millage. This is the first year of the millage, and we want to thank the citizens of Kent County for a dedicated source of funding and the confidence that they placed in us. So what's the millage for? Well, you may remember from the ballot or the campaigning that for the zoo, it's for the purpose of establishing dedicated funding for the care of animals and providing enhanced education programs in the repair and improvement of exhibits. So what is that exactly? For the care of animals, we're an AZA-accredited facility, which means we provide and have the highest standards of animal care. How much does that cost? Well, as promised, our annual report is posted on our website, and I have a copy here. But in that annual report, you'll see in 2016, total animal care in the animal was $4,397,000. So providing high-quality animal care, veterinary care, food, diet, enrichment, it does add up. On the educational programming, it allows us to expand our education programs and content, but it also allows a free school field trip, K through 12, throughout Kent County. On the repair and improvement exhibits, the millage allows us to address deferred maintenance and update animal exhibits to ensure we're providing that top-quality care. As an AZA-accredited, those standards change over the decades, and we're in a constant cycle of making sure, as new science becomes available, that we're providing the top care. On our core values, last year, I thought it'd be important that we update our mission statement, our core values, and our behavioral values. While our mission statement is why we do what we do, our values, core and behavior, are how we do what we do. On the core values, we have four of them: conservation, education, community, and celebrate. Today, I'm just on the first three, but I'll spend most of my time on community, because I think I'm guessing, as commissioner, it's probably what you want to hear the most about. But first, on conservation, this is about protecting wildlife and our natural environment. This is what makes us a zoo versus a park, a stadium, or a museum. All these places have in common that they're community treasures, they're great places for families to gather, great recreational activities, great things that make our community great. But their backdrop is different. Our is wildlife and our natural environment. Earlier, I talked about AZA, or Associations of Zoos and Aquarians. This is the highest and hardest accreditation standard, and it means that we're about top-quality animal care, saving the animals from extinction, and public safety. Less than 10% of our zoos have this level of accreditation. The John Ball Zoo has held it longer than any other zoo in the state of Michigan, over 30 years. It's also one of the oldest, longest, continuously accredited AZA zoos in the United States. And considering the number of zoos there are, that's accomplishment. It's also fitting since we're 126 years old. It also means that we're science-based. As a matter of fact, all of our keepers have four-year science degrees in the life sciences. This allows us to participate in 35 species survival plans, provide leadership on 39 scientific TACSON advisory groups. It also gives us the expertise to conduct research with universities and to save animals from extinction, including the in-situ work we do right here in the state of Michigan. Most of all, it gives us the knowledge and expertise to provide the highest levels of animal care and the animals entrusted to us. I'd love to go and talk more about what this specifically means, but I'm hoping that some of you will ask some questions in Q and A where I can expand on that. On education, as a science-based organization, education is naturally important to us. We have various programs onsite at the zoo, but also offsite, where we go out into the community, including schools, in many cases bringing our animals with us. I did spend an hour talking about our education programs, because we fill a 20-page education catalog each year with those. But I think the important takeaway is our education programs reached almost 40,000 children last year. About 26% of that was from Grand Rapids Public Schools. The remaining, almost 75%, came from all of the other school districts within Kent County. I can only imagine this number will grow, because now we offer free field trips from K through 12. We're committed to working with our community and KISD to develop relevant and needed programming. On the community side, I like to focus on our size and our economic impact, our commitment to accessibility, and diversity and inclusion. On size and scope, many people are surprised to learn about our impact. The John Ball Zoo is over 100 acres, which is plenty of space to serve our community. We have 225 paid full-time equivalents. And I say full-time equivalents because we're a seasonal business and our staffing varies by the time of year. For example, today, I have 280 people on payroll, but in the winter season, that drops dramatically when the zoos close. We have over 200 volunteers. We're the fourth-most-attended cultural institution in the state of Michigan. Over 500,000 people visit the zoo each year. Many more include the park. 40% of our attendance comes from Kent County. The remaining 60% comes from the other 82 counties and 11 states. We are a regional tourist attraction on a national scale, attracting attendance from 11 states. This is not surprising. One considers that more people go to zoos each year than the combined attendance of professional baseball, basketball, and hockey in the United States. That's kind of wild to think about. More people go to zoos each year than professional football, baseball, basketball, and hockey. Great zoos build great communities. On the economic impact, nobody likes to talk about economics. I'll keep this... My CFO's not here. Some of us like to talk about economics, but according to GVSU study, our economic impact to Kent County is almost $40 million per year. Of the 40 million, 18 million came to Kent's sole purpose of the zoo. Again, great zoos build great communities. Commitment to accessibility. When we were before this group last year, and when I was out touring the community, talking to different cities, I heard a lot about requests about, hey, let's make sure the zoo's accessible for all families. So I'd like to talk about two types of accessibility. First, every family in Kent County should be able to attend the zoo as a family. Our jump pass does that. Families that are on a reduced or free lunch program leave a passage for the entire family to attend the zoo for free as a family. Over 38,000 people attended the zoo on the jump pass last year. This is made possible through generous donations from caring people throughout our community. Second, our zoo should be ADA-friendly. ADA-friendly means those with disabilities can navigate our hillside zoo. It also means a zoo that is stroller-friendly. What are some examples of this? Last year, we built a gently-sloped boardwalk from the bottom of the waterfall to the top of the hill, where the new Red Panda exhibit is. This year, we'll start construction on our Upper Valley Trail, which is from the Warthog Line exhibit all the way to Tiger Trail. This only leaves the Lower Valley Trail, which is the main entrance, that steep path as you come in. And once that is done, all pathways in our zoo will be ADA-friendly. Why is this important? All members of our community should be able to enjoy the zoo as a family, whether it's our grandparents, parents, siblings, children, or just our neighbors. Again, strong families build strong communities. In diversity and inclusion, we're an outward-facing community organization that serves its community. How can we not talk about diversity and inclusion? This year, we started our annual diversity and inclusion awareness training. All team members have received this. Future training will include a class on diversity and inclusion for the hiring manager, and diversity and inclusion for how to manage a diverse team for inclusion. To share some numbers, in 2015, our minority representation of the workforce was 8%. Today, it's 14%, or 1 in 7. That's almost double in 18 months. So what is the future bringing? This year, we added a bird show and a red panda joined our family. An endangered species, well, less than 2,000 of that subspecies in the wild. I also taught earlier about the Upper Valley Trail being replaced with a gently-sloped trail. We anticipate starting that after the zoo closes for the season. And we're a great community zoo, but we're also a great tourist attraction for the state of Michigan. So when we're... So right now, we're refining our master plan that the county approved a few years ago, and we're developing funding models to fuel that master plan. With the millage, we still need to fundraise for operations and capital. As a matter of fact, we will operationally fundraise almost $2 million this year. That's just for operations, not new capital projects like exhibits. We will need considerably more for capital projects in the future. But it's a great time to be in Kent County, and I'm biased, but it's always a great time to visit the John Ball Zoo. And I'm hoping you have some questions for me.
Thank you, Peter. We'll open it up. We have time for just a few. Commissioner Corndyke?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your report. Appreciate your work. Couple of quick questions. So you did get the millage money. How is the zoo doing financially now? You mentioned that you're still fundraising for a couple million dollars of operations. Are you projecting a surplus or a deficit in this year? Or how is the millage money impacting the zoo itself? That's my first question. The next question is, how is your attendance at the zoo this year? Up, down, same? How are things going now?
Both great questions, because attendance does drive all numbers in our type of business. We are financially stable now. We started this fiscal year with a debt of $1.3 million. We're paying down 500,000 of that debt. We project to finish at 800,000. Currently, we're not carrying any debt, because we're having a really good year, though. So I think the short answer is net income from operations is a surplus, which is allowing us to fuel deferred maintenance, and allowed us to build the Red Panda exhibit and start construction on the trail. So we're financially stable. Second question on attendance. Attendance is driven by many things. You know, we're so dependent on the weather, and when you have a new exhibit, you tend to get a bump in attendance. And right now, our plan is 510,000 people this year of zoo attendance. That's not including the park. Include the park, we're over 700,000. But 510, we're currently tracking 23,000 above plan. I'm concerned about school going back early, so I anticipate finishing around 510, 515. That's a strong year. Last year, we were at 503,000. I believe the year before that, we were 515, as we opened the new Tiger exhibit. And we can attribute the growth in attendance by spending more money on marketing and trying to target more zip codes and communities specifically outside of Kent County. For example, we're advertising Traverse City. We're advertising along the Lake Shore. And that's because the more we can bring people to the county. Michigan's a great tourist destination. There are people that travel from other states all the time, and they vacation along the Lake Shore. And we're trying to figure out, how do we get someone that's doing that to come into Kent County and spend a day at the zoo, and candidly, hopefully, at other great institutions in the area? Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair. I'll jump back to your number-one thing, conservation. How many animals do we have in our park that are either endangered or extinct list?
So we have 30 animals on a species survival plan. And that means those numbers are getting critical, that they're either extinct in the wild, or if we're not managing them, they're on the track to go towards extinction. So total number of animals that are endangered, I'd have to look that up for you, but it would be roughly about half of the animals. So about 500, 600, 500, 700 animals, because I'm not including the fish.
Okay.
Because they're hard to count. Of the ones that are critically endangered or are on track towards extinction, 35 species that we have. And when I say towards extinction, for example, our Western Mountain Bongo is on track to go extinct in the wild in seven years. We just had a birth last year, so we're very excited about that. Our Merrid Tigers, which we can't breed in the state of Michigan, did a large carnivore act, and we're working hard to change that. But there are less than 400 in the wild, and we have what we call a Level 1 genetic match. So we gene map all of our animals, and we teach stud books. And if it's a Level 1, that's a genetic representation you want to maintain, so when you reintroduce animals into the wild, there's a sustainable population. If it's a 4 or 5, it's brother, sister, mom, dad, and you would never want to pair them off.
So then a quick follow-up, that's part of the role of zoos, is that very few zoos are very good at a breeding program that reintroduces them into the wild, but there are some that are very successful. What, you know, I've seen the signs where you support conservation groups. How does the zoo zoom in on which ones are going to be supported for efforts like that?
That is a great question. So the first part of that question, only about 10% of the zoos in the United States are AZA-accredited. The AZA zoos, to be accredited, you have to be doing some type of work in conservation. That doesn't mean other organizations don't do it. It just means you're guaranteed if it's an AZA. So we're more focused on, it's not about, yes, we want to have animals so people can see them, but our animals can choose exhibit, our animals can choose their mates. So we're really focused on how to save them from extinction. How we choose what animals to save varies from zoo to zoo. We're actually in the process of rewriting our conservation plan, and we anticipate it being done about mid-year, next year. But I want our focus to be 51% or more of our conservation efforts to be in the Great Lakes region. You'll see a lot of great zoos. They focus on other continents. And that's not that the other continents aren't important. But by focusing more than half of our dollars, we can keep money local. But it also allows us to partner with school districts, partner with biology programs, and really create some educational value. Currently, we're participating in five in-situ Michigan species survival, or save the animals from extinction. And those five, we don't even have at the zoo. And that's because of our efforts. So we go out into the field, we partner with other organizations, we do conservation work, census towns, head start programs. The Kirtland Warbler, the Piper, Eastern Massasadwa, Rattlesnake, the Salamander, and a Bot's Turtle. And those are pretty exciting programs. Matter of fact, one of those is actually going to be debated this year by Michigan on whether they should be de-listed as threatened because of our efforts. It's not just us, though. We've partnered with Detroit Zoo and some other institutions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Vonk?
Thank you, Chair. Peter, you mentioned handicap access. Would you tell me what that means? I have an interest in that, and I know young people, too, that are injured in sports industry or injuries or whatever, have an interest in that, too, of being able to get around the facility.
Great question. So zoos are outdoor environments, and another challenge that we have besides being outdoors is, meaning that the pathways, what you have to work the grade, is we're built into a hill. So historically, the zoo has not been ADA-accessible, meaning that the slopes are below the 7%. You have to have a landing every so many feet, and handrails, if you're under 5%, you don't need any landings or any rails. So we're developing pathways that are ideally under 5%, all of them under 7%. So that way, wheelchairs can navigate, and we meet the requirements of ADA. It also includes retrofitting restrooms to be ADA-accessible. Matter of fact, one of the CIP requests we made this year was to upgrade a restroom to be ADA-accessible. The grab rails and the heights are all compliant, which I am thankful that this group approved.
Just let me give one other comment. At Metro Hospital, you can leave your driver's license and use a scooter on the premises. And it's really helpful for people like myself, as I mentioned, and others. And at the sports park on Ten Mile, they have golf carts that they move injured people or people with handicaps around the facility. And I would hope that we could raise the level now at the zoo, above and beyond, just pushing people with wheelchairs that they could be independent and have a means of travel.
Right. And I'm sorry, I left that out. I should have talked about that. So we do offer wheelchairs free of charge. Many zoos charge for them, but because of our hillside. And we do have powered scooters as well.
Available.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
I will say, though, due to our... We've had some record attendance days, that there were a couple days this year we actually ran out. So we're looking at adding to that. But absolutely, it's our commitment to community, it's our commitment to families, to be able to go out and enjoy the experience as a family.
Thank you.
And we're also looking at some other programs for people that are sight-challenged, too, like scriptive audio and things like that.
Thank you.
Okay, we have time for a couple more questions. I'll call on Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Awesome work.
Thank you.
Exciting. Quick question, just regarding school kids, just because I'm a mom and we're getting ready for back-to-school. Are we including all schoolchildren, so homeschooling, private schooling, charter schooling, in kind of our entire program and process?
We absolutely are. The homeschooling is a little more challenging to work through. We do do it, but there's an organization where homeschoolers get together.
Okay.
And that group can come out as a group for a school field trip.
Okay. Thank you.
And I wish I knew the exact... I want to say we had 10,000 students take advantage of that program, which isn't...
Do they come one time, or they can come whenever they want?
The stroll can come as a classroom once per year. So they can come back again next year.
Okay.
That number's not really that high, considering how many students we have, but we just launched the program.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Commissioner Melton?
Thank you, Chair. Mine isn't so much a question, not that I mentioned to my grandson that I was... that zoo was going to be presenting, and he went the very first to the New Panda.
Oh, great.
And he said, "Well, Mammy, will you ask, will the panda have a friend?"
So...
So I've at least asked. I said, "I don't know that the panda will get a friend right away."
So our goal is, yes, the panda will get a friend.
Okay.
And we built the structure to be able... Because they're part of a species survival plan, that we absolutely do want to be able to mate the panda. And our animals can choose their mates, so mammals can be a little more pigeon reptiles. But...
Oh, they want it.
So we're working on bringing one in. I don't know exactly when that will be. Red pandas are solitary animals, but they will get together, to me.
It's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
If there are other questions, I'm sure you're always willing to take questions from our commissioners, and they will follow up. We'd really appreciate your time here today.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
And next, we will call on Dale Robertson, who will give us the annual update for the Grand Rapids Public Museum. Welcome, Dale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dale Robertson. I'm with the Grand Rapids Public Museum. It's a pleasure to be here and to address you this morning. Peter and I were together doing this a lot just a year ago, and it's... What a difference. What a difference just a few months made. I want a big, special recognition here of co-chair Harold Voorhees, along with Lyman Parks Jr. and Wendy Fobb. And then we've just added Commissioner Breevy to our Board of Trustees, who'll be joining the Audit Committee. And so in her reporting back to you, of course, as a member of the Audit Committee, she'll see everything. So thank you for the vote that you all made over a year ago to put this, to put the millage on the ballot. It was something that was absolutely necessary for the Grand Rapids Public Museum. And so if you'll allow me just to retrace a little bit of that history and then share some of the things that where we've been, and allow me maybe to just to brag a little bit, you know, I'm not from here. I'm not from here, I'm a Down River Detroit guy, so I have no West Michigan humility, all right? So, I get to tell those of you who are here, who are from here, how good this town really is, how wonderful Michigan really is, and what kind of leadership is in the history and the DNA of West Michigan. The Grand Rapids Public Museum is the oldest museum in the state of Michigan. It is the second-largest museum in the state of Michigan in terms of size of its collections. With this is, I believe, a unique fact nationwide, ninety percent of what we have in our collections were donated by the people of West Michigan over one-hundred-and-sixty-three years for the good of the community. We continue to be publicly owned and have been right from the very beginning. Our very beginnings, we trace back to Grand Rapids Public Schools and then the city of Grand Rapids. Now, we ceased to be a city department in two thousand and six, but the city of Grand Rapids maintains title to this day to all the artifacts, all the buildings, and all the land. So, we're truly a publicly-owned entity. We did lose our city funding in two thousand and eight, which is when I showed, but here's an interesting fact, at that point, we had, we were welcoming through our doors, sixty-eight-thousand people came through that year. So, we set out on a project to relook at what our history was, our background, where we were, where we needed to go, and how we could make good on the promise to those who gave to the museum, right? And I argue they gave for the noble purpose of inspiration and education. So, required us to look back at our roots, and we didn't have to look very far. Looked at the plaque in the old museum building where it said, "The institution is dedicated to knowledge for all." Okay, so that's where we start. Broad accessibility to the welcoming entire community, focus on education, knowledge, and so forth. This past year, our fiscal year ended on June thirtieth, we had two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand people that came through our doors. We have averaged over two-hundred-thousand people for the last five years. The millage, and Peter quoted the language in there, what establishing, funded, dedicated funding for care of animals and artifacts, improving exhibits, and enhanced programming. Also included then on top of that, with that accessibility and knowledge, benefits to the community. So, for us, it's free admission for all Kent County kids, zero through seventeen, reduced admissions prices for adults and seniors, and then free parking in our ramp. As of August fifteenth, forty-five-hundred-and-seventy-two have taken advantage of that benefit. So, one of the main things and key things that the millage has allowed us to do is provide that stable source of revenue, so we can just cover the core operational costs. We have to have constant humidity and constant temperature twenty-four hours a day in both the Van Andel Museum Center and in the Archives. So, the mill provides that core funding and then allows us to do some of the things, which I'll touch on, but then what that, because that is now covered, it allows us to do another thing that we do so well here in West Michigan, which is partner. Partner with other groups, partner with other organizations, partner with experts out into the community. So, let me just give you a couple of examples of those, actually more than a couple, and you can give me the sign if I'm going too long, because I've got to hold this. So, we just, let's just go to the most, this past weekend, we partnered with Grand Valley State University and Grand Rapids Community College for something called Maker Fair. There is an amazingly active maker community within Kent County, and so we actually have the franchise for the, for, you know, Maker Fair. It is a national organization, we have the franchise here in West Michigan, and we had four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty people that came through the museum in two days to interact with, well, we even had, we were pouring iron out on Front Street where people could come in and make molds and so forth. So, three-D printers, all sorts of things, again, inspiration, hands-on. We had an eclipse on Monday, and so we decided, we got the planetarium, and we partner with the Grand Rapids Amateur Astronomical Association to operate the Veen Observatory, and they brought in telescopes, and we advertised, and we thought, you know, if people want to come and enjoy the eclipse and see planetariums and shows, so we planned about, we thought maybe a thousand to two thousand people, maybe, we had forty-six-hundred people that came to enjoy the eclipse on the museum. So, the community coming around this institution is gratifying, frankly. We continue to look at what people, how people live their lives and how to best interact, you know, even in this digital age, right? People do claim, do crave a real, but we know that we need to look to ways to enhance that. So, virtual reality and augmented reality are things that we are looking into. And in West Michigan's spirit, we are partnering with students from Ferris State University who are actually working on a virtual reality of what will the rapids look like, and you can kayak down that. We've partnered with Wemcat students for, to reinterpret some of our Furniture City exhibit. We are opening a planetarium show on October nineteenth. This one, they're looking at the stars, while the new equipment that really, through a lead gift from Waggy Foundation, you can go very small, too. So, arguably the most significant scientific discovery in the last fifty to seventy-five years, right, discovered at, through data collected, the largest machine ever constructed in the history of mankind, the Large Hadron Collider in Europe, okay, was proven to exist, something called the Higgs Field, which was proven through the Higgs boson being discovered, okay, which is the thing through which we all gassed, a guy named Peter Higgs won the Nobel Prize for that. We have two Grand Rapids natives that were among the scientists that were part of that discovery. One's a professor at Ohio State, one's a professor in Denmark, were our scientific advisors to create this planetarium show. We then partnered with Hope Network's Autism Center, so that show and the experience, hands-on experience we're designing afterwards will be autism-friendly, okay, and we embrace something called Design for Learning, that says if you can get things right for those of us on the edges of the learning spectrum, it improves it, experience for those of us in the middle. So, that means we all are going to benefit by that. We have a brain, traveling brain exhibit that's coming, opening in about a month. We try to put a West Michigan twist on everything that we do. A class from Calvin College actually went through our archives and created an exhibit on mental health here in West Michigan, so we're just taking what those kids came up with and are putting that one twist on that brain exhibit. We've got a puzzle exhibit in now, and we created one of these puzzle rooms as our West Michigan twist, right from using our own people. And of course, you know, we are Beer City, so we've got a, we've had a series of classes on the science of beer that have been highly, highly attended. We've recently adopted, at first time in our history, a collections plan, and we are redefining our collections. So, when they're done, seventy-five percent will be able to be used in some way, shape, or form. Add them into tiers, so the tier three are those you can touch, just like picking up this without gloves or anything. Four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty artifacts are now in that tier one. We're putting those collections online, we've got twelve-thousand images online. The millage has also allowed us then to participate in the city of Grand Rapids Asset Management Program, which is a pay-for-play, if you will, program, and they go out and do all the contracting and so forth, and that's allowed us then, through that, to replace our elevator in our parking ramp, do some maintenance there in the parking ramp that needed to be done, some painting, and also to upgrade and replace the elevator in the Van Andel Museum Center. And we are also now beginning the process of looking out into the future of how do we revamp and redesign the exhibits with inside the Van Andel Museum Center. The last two points that I will make is that we are one of now the six opportunity sites defined by the city for beginning to look at landscape architecture work regarding the putting in of the rapids into the, back into the river, so we are hoping that we will be that interpretation site for the rapids, as well as to continue doing all the work that we do now in watershed education and natural resources education. And then finally, if you happen to be on Friday night, September eighth, at eight P.M., you'll be able to see on all four networks, an hour-long, commercial-free special on the XQ Super School Project. Ten schools nationwide received each a ten-million-dollar prize towards reimagining and reinventing the high school experience. The Grand Rapids Public Museum School, which again, is a partnership, a Grand Valley State University, College of Art and Design, Grand Rapids Public School, City of Grand Rapids, and the Grand Rapids Public Museum, we were one of those ten winners nationwide, the only one within the middle of the state. The XQ people have bought that entire hour on all four networks to tell the story of that, of that entire project. Now, they keep it close, I don't know what they're going to say, but we're going to be in it, which means Grand Rapids, Kent County, will be in that nationwide wide broadcast. So, for us, good for the community, and thank you for the opportunity to appear here before and for your vote to put the millage on the ballot that will allow us to get to the point where we are now, and then advancing our service and our mission towards the community.
Thank you, Dale. We'll allow for a few questions in the time that's allotted. Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a quick statement. You know, I really appreciate all the work that the museum is doing, I enjoy serving on the board, and it's a great bunch of people that are helping move the museum forward, and I think there's just a lot of genius ideas of things that are coming out down the road and, you know, constant creativity that I see, which is really important. You know, you have lots of old archives and things, but thinking of new ways to show and explain them to our community, and it's definitely one place that my kids love to go, they could go there every week if we had the time. So, it's a gem in our community, and I appreciate that we support it as a county. So, thank you, Dale.
Thank you, Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you. I wanted to say this to both, because it's kind of the same. With my day job hat at Disability Advocates, it is awesome to see the commitment and passion and the embracing of that accessibility and universal design. Dale, you used that word, Peter, you alluded to it, but it is, again, it's, Dale has the opportunity to work on a flat surface with an elevator, Peter gets to work on the side of a hill, and so accessibility challenges are unique everywhere. So, but again, so much for that, and I look forward to that next, you know, few years and the next generation of redevelopment of that experience. And so, it's, again, it's fantastic to see and it's awesome to partner with you, but also, again, it's many, many partners on the disability side of the table. It's not just, as you mentioned, Hope Network and our Autism Center, but it's, again, it's been fantastic to see, so thank you so much for that and again, for that commitment.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Dale.
Good morning.
First, thank you for your attention, true health, it is critical. A couple of questions. The first is, at the time of the millage campaign, one of the representations I recall had to do with the foundation. You have a foundation, and I think the concept was that the foundation, while it may have historically contributed to operations, was going to use this opportunity to preserve and protect and grow. Is that still the plan and what's the status of that?
Yes, that, so, when we ended our fiscal, June thirtieth, this is the last, that was the last year that we will take an appropriation out of the endowment. So, our budget that we approved for this fiscal year that we're in now and our plans we presented to the board going out is that we will take no appropriation for the next ten years to then allow everything to be invested. We will, of course, we will be going out, we begin to do planning now in future fundraising, then to do fundraising for the endowment. Our goal at some point is to not have to renew the millage. Now, whether that, I'm not going to commit to when that will be, but that has been the goal of, at some point, to not, not to ask the voters to renew the millage, because the endowment will get to the point where they can provide all of the core funding that we need. That's the ultimate, that's the ultimate goal, which is not taking a draw at all over the next ten years.
Good. And then, second question, so when we talk about museum to somebody my age, that's a building over here on State Street, but what's the long-term plan for that?
So, the, actually, there's construction going on there right now in the old museum building. It is a historic building, it's a WPA project building, and so it is being remodeled to house the ninth through the twelfth grade classes of the Grand Rapids Public Museum School. Now, their, the partnership with Grand Rapids Public, which, we actually own the building now, so the title was transferred back to Grand Rapids Public Schools. They had actually had, they had donated the land to the city and the museum, the schools did, and there was actually a clause in the deed that if it should ever be stopped, used for museum purpose, it would go back to the school. So, that's really what happened. And retrofitted for that, but there will be a lot of community use in that space also, and we're also working to, there's some adjoining to retrofit that, which would be public entrance and public access. So, we plan to make access to our collections and getting into the Archives more accessible to the public and be part of a routine interaction with the Grand Rapids Public Museum for individuals and groups and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. As, oh, okay, one more question, then we've got to move on. Go ahead.
Thanks, too. Sorry about that. Good morning. I was just wondering, I know you guys support the Restore the Rapids. Are you guys supporting it in any way, other than just general support through, you know, human resources or any type of financial resources?
So, as one of the opportunity sites, yes, and the millage did help us to be able to make a contribution towards the efforts that the city of Grand Rapids is undergoing through the city engineer and so forth. So, yeah, we were actually able to be a, you know, full partner at the table in that act.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale, and again, thank you both, Peter and Dale, for those updates. It's great to hear how things are going following the millage campaign and the results of that from last year. We thank you for your updates. Quick programming note, there is, as I understand it, a group interview with Gov. HR that's scheduled for, I think, around nine forty-five, I don't know who's all in that, but they can start at eight is ten, but if our meeting goes any longer, those, that meeting will be rescheduled as individual phone interviews. So, if that's any incentive to keep ourselves timely, hopefully it will be. With that, I will move to item number six on the agenda, which is public comment. If anybody has public comment, please step forward, state your name, your address, you have three minutes to address the board.
Good morning, Commissioner. Wanted to thank you for several of you inviting me back.
Remember to state your name and address.
That's right. Pastor Daniel Scut, twelve oh four Hovey, Southwest. I live near the zoo, but not in it. Been there for twenty-five years. Several of you said you're praying for what I've been proposing, I appreciate that, and I just want to mention to every one of you, if you ever have a personal prayer request, personal family, as a commissioner, please let me know. I'd be happy to do that and even bring that before our three churches. Another reason why I am encouraging you to do all you can to make Kent County a sanctuary and refuge county for the unwanted children of this county is because, right on your statement on each one of your agendas, every meeting, it says this. "The mission of Kent County government is to be an effective and efficient steward in delivering quality services for our diverse community. Our priority is to provide mandated services, which may be enhanced and supplemented by additional services, to improve the quality of life for all citizens within the constraints of sound physical policy." I'm here to speak up for citizens that cannot speak, the unborn. I want to share with you one of the methods that is being used to destroy the unborn. And I'm going to substitute the word murder for every word where it says abortion. The horrors of saline murder are well-known among the pro-life movement. Saline murders fall under the method known as installation murder, a method where substances including saline, dioxin, potassium chloride are injected into a preborn baby's body, and they do feel the pain. More and more research is, scientific research is concluding that.
You have one minute.
Saline murder is also considered a surgical murder procedure, is performed by injecting a saline solution into the mother's uterus, directly into the amniotic sac. The baby poisoned, but also chemically burned alive from the inside out. The outer layer of the skin is burned off. It will take him over an hour to die. The saline solution also induces contractions, so about a day later, the mother will give birth to her dead baby, although some babies have survived. birth to her dead baby, although some babies have survived. And the way they finish that murder is to usually strangle the baby outside the womb. I'm gonna pass around pictures of a teen murder. I would encourage you to take one and pass it down. Again, we have a program that we can help mothers that wanna come and have their baby here. And, again, we ask you to do all you can to save these precious lives. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that has public comment this morning? Again, please state your name and your address. You have three minutes.
My name is Beverly McGee Betts. My address is 1831 Lafayette, Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm a member of the Senior Community Service Employment Program, CSEP. I stand in strong opposition of the President's proposal budget cuts in his FYI-18 budget. And I ask for your assistance in helping to ensure that the proposed cuts do not fool Congress. The President's initial budget framework will slash programs for seniors and younger people with disabilities. The Trump physical plan will cut critical services to the tune of approximately 18 million dollars. Programs like legal assistance, meal on wheels, public service jobs for low-income seniors are especially targeted for cuts. President Trump will eliminate the HHS Office of Community Services, include an energy assistance program for low-income families, including seniors. Critical programs for seniors, including the Older American Act, OAA, will face big reductions. The OAA helps fund senior nutrition programs, caregiver support, respite care, information services, elderly abuse prevention, and dozens of other programs. The budget will cut 6.2 billion from the Section 202 program that funds commercial development and housing for low-income seniors. It will eliminate the Senior Community Service Employment Program, CSEP, which help older adults get public service jobs, stay productive, use their skills, learn new skills, and again, feel that we are contributing and giving back to our community. This is the program that I stand before you representing today. This budget proposal is a slap in the face for senior citizens all over the country. It is an attempt to take away not only critical programs we need to for survival, but also network and activities of daily living. Some of us depend on programs like energy assistance, respite care, elderly abuse prevention, supportive houses, and so forth for survival.
You have one minute left.
We request that you support us in opposing these cuts to the federal budget by contacting your congressperson and asking them to vote no on the Trump budget cuts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else today for public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Brandon Sinclair and I reside at 8080 Ritz-Pine Drive, Rockford, Michigan. Shout out really quick to my commissioner, Diane Jones.
Brandon.
Good to see you. I am the West Michigan Constituent Relations Representative for Michigan Attorney General Bill Schute. I just wanted to come here and be a point of contact for each of you and for each of the constituents here in the crowd. If I may, I'd like to just keep this brief and provide you all verbally with my contact information, if I may be of service. My email address is Sinclair, and that's spelled S-I-N-C-L-A-I-R-B at Michigan.gov. And my phone number is 517-881-1781. Once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment today? I am seeing none, so we will move to agenda item number seven, which is our consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like consent agenda.
Is there support by Commissioner Morgan? Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Vice Chair Bolter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to standing rules, I will be abstaining from this vote to avoid a potential conflict of interest as a result of being an employee of Spectrum Health.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I see none. This is a roll call vote.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Abstain.
Commissioners Brevi.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yays, zero nays, and one abstention. The motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda items, which are our resolutions. We have four. For the first one, I will call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you Chair. I move Resolution 8241758, which is a culmination of many months of work. This basically recognizes the county of Kent as a community action agency, community development, housing commission. I move that resolution.
Support. Support by Commissioner Corndyke. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Bolkowski?
Yeah, just real brief. You know, sometimes the wherethes get glossed over and, and sometimes we then just jump to that resolution part. And, and especially building on the pretty powerful public comment concerning federal budget issues. That first whereas where it states, you know, the county now, if we say yes, if we say yes, the county will be serving as a primary advocate for the reduction of causes, conditions, and effects of poverty. The county does the job being a primary service provider, addressing these three issues. Advocacy is a different word. Advocacy means to speak. Again, we heard somebody speak pretty clearly and forcefully about support for services that eradicate and reduce causes, conditions, and effects of poverty. Evidence-based services and supports that unfortunately are on the chopping block. So I hope with your yes, you grab that verb, which is to advocate and then to promote, and we might liven up our mission statement, which currently doesn't say we advocate or promote. So again, I thank our public comment, the second one, and I'll leave my comment at that. Thank you, in the first whereas.
Any other comments or questions? I see none. This is not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to the second resolution, and I will- Commissioner Hennessy.
I move Resolution Number 59 to acquire property for the expansion of Falls Brook Park.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on this resolution? I am not seeing any. I will call on Madam Clerk, because this is a roll call vote.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt Resolution 59, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Brevi, Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yays, zero nays. The motion is passed.
Excellent, thank you. We will move resolution, and I will call again on Commissioner Mast.
Yes, thank you. This is a resolution to pass, Finance Committee recommendation, for the purchase of 145 acres to expand Chief Hazy Cloud Park, and I move that resolution.
Is there support? Second. Support by Commissioner Skaggs. Questions or comments on this resolution? I am seeing none, so again, I will call third.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt Resolution 60, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Brevi.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yays, zero nays. The motion is passed.
Excellent, thank you. We will move resolution, and I will call again on Commissioner Mast.
Yes, thank you. This is a resolution to pass, Finance Committee recommendation, for the purchase of 145 acres to expand Chief Hazy Cloud Park, and I move that resolution.
Is there support? Second. Support by Commissioners Skaggs. Questions or comments on this resolution? I am seeing none, so again, I will call third.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt Resolution 60, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Brevi.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yays, zero nays. The motion is passed.
Excellent, thank you. We will move resolution, and I will call again on Commissioner Mast.
Yes, thank you. This is a resolution to pass, Finance Committee recommendation, for the purchase of 145 acres to expand Chief Hazy Cloud Park, and I move that resolution.
Is there support? Second. Support by Commissioners Skaggs. Questions or comments on this resolution? I am seeing none, so again, I will call third.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt Resolution 60, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Brevi.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, 18 yays, zero nays. The motion passes.
Thank you. And for our final resolution, before I call on Commissioner Bolkowski, I just wanna remind or refresh everybody again that we are taking up the Friend of the Court report per the updated rules. We have received it, and now there is a, there'll be a motion to adopt the report and if applicable, refer specific recommendation appropriate to standing committee. And, and you'll see that outlined in the proposed resolution. With that, I will call on Commissioner Bolkowski.
I would move the Resolution 61, which is the Friend of the Court Community Engagement Task Force Report and Recommendations.
Support. Support by Commissioner Corndyke. At this point, before we get into questions, we are gonna have a brief presentation. Mary Swanson and Dave will give us a little detail.
Yeah, my brevity is simply to begin with thank you, as I had said when we first presented the report and then received it, you know, thank you for the committee. With us today is our Friend of the Court, Dan Fotick, and Andy Tholhammer, who is with the Circuit Court. I think that's it, who is here. I know City Commissioner Sanita Lanier, who's extremely passionate and committed to this set of recommendations, sends her apologies. Her schedule didn't allow her to be here with us. And of course, Wayman Britt, when he had a different hat, was part of this. So excellent work. As I said before, the brevity of this report cannot distract us from the impact that is hidden in these few words. So with that, take it away, Mary.
Thanks, Dave. And I understand this has been a long meeting. I will keep this brief, but as Commissioner Bolkowski mentioned, Chair Saulfeld, this was an important work in our community. It brought together a very large and dedicated group of people who spent a lot of time wrestling with this issue. And just for the record, I'd like to acknowledge everyone who served on that committee. In addition to Chair Bolkowski, we also had Commissioners Dan Corndyke, Commissioner Voorhees, City Commissioner Sanita Lanier, from the community, Clee Jackson of the NAACP, Reverend Dan Oglesby, Reverend Jerry Bishop, Reverend Jerome Glenn, representing our Friend of the Court Citizens Advisory Committee that you'll hear more about in a few minutes. We had its chair, Bishop Walter Durham, Tony Jaliffi, and Candace Chivas. Wayman Britt was very active in this organization as well. And we also had two Circuit Court judges, Judge Zomitis and Judge Deborah McNabb, who participated. So Andy Tholhammer staffed it on behalf of the court. I was your representative, helping staff that committee. I think on behalf of both Andy and myself, we really want to acknowledge not only the task force members, but also Dan and his staff, Under Sheriff Michelle Young, and members of the Sheriff's Office, who provided the task force with a lot of information and really helped us break down the process and the reasons and how we could better do things. We also heard from the Genesee County Board and one of his community partners, and several task force members also made presentations. So this was a very engaged and involved group, and I just wanna make sure that that's acknowledged in the record here. As I mentioned, the task force spent just a considerable amount of time walking through the child support process. That was included as part of this report, and it's a, we put together a bit of a flow chart, and we think that was really going to be a good communication piece forward, and it was a great education piece for the task force members and the community. And the reason we spent so much time on process was, to a certain extent, the best bench warrant enforcement program is a bench warrant prevention program. So most of the recommendations focus on increasing communication, outreach, and access to FOC clients and to have a better understanding of that within the community. So to that end, you'll see the very first recommendation was for more emphasis on helping parents understand and navigate the system early on in the process. And there's some specifics that the task force wanted to include in there, including being more collaborative with our Health Department, DHHS, hospitals, and the Prosecutor's Office, and just doing some very focused and intentional activities to engage the community earlier and help them to understand the FOC process. Also, in response to some of the comments they heard, the task force recommended that we expand the capacity for credit card payments, try to make documents more clear, and implement a formal customer service and continued customer improvement process. So those are activities that will be included in the report as it goes over to the Circuit Court side. The task force reviewed all the steps of the process up to there being scheduled a hearing where the payer is summoned to come in. Warrants are issued when payers are summoned to come in and show cause why they are not making that child support payment. And sometimes there's some very good reasons why they're not making it, but we have to make sure that they get in front of the judge and explain that on the record if necessary, or come to the Friend of the Court. So one of the recommendations was to try to have a community-based organization reach And to present an annual report to the judge and this board of commissioners in an open session. So you'll probably have another special order of business on this coming in next year. There was also a request to have the Board of Commissioners have a formal representative to that committee. That's something that would need to be reviewed by the LHR Committee under your standing rules. They're charged with making those appointments, so we would be taking them forward at a future meeting if this is adopted here.
Okay, then we have the motion and support on table. Questions and comments on the resolution? Commissioner Matt.
I just want to, I guess, clarify. Probably you mentioned it, but is this flow chart what you are recommending, once we pass this resolution happen, or is that the current flow chart?
That is the current flow chart. We wanted to put it out there so that everyone understood what the process is and the steps in the process, that people go through the opportunities for contact with the Friend of the Court. So that's just an education tool for everything the Friend of the Court is working on.
Well, but so some of the recommendations, such as the outreach and the, oh, I don't know, a staff member to contact payers and stuff, are not part of this flow chart here now, but they would be now.
Right. The flow chart doesn't show all the detail of the process, so what we're doing there is really enhancing one of the steps.
Okay. Could I have a follow-up? I'm just amazed, your first paragraph, your first sentence, there are 3,500 outstanding bench warrants for 6,000 children. There's got to be a lot of fathers paying. So how many total children do we have receiving court orders to support? I mean, I thought 6,000 was even high, but there must be 10,000 or 12,000 or something.
I think Dan Fotek will be able to answer this. This is a snapshot at any one time.
According to the children were 39,000 cases, so by and large, most parents do pay the child support. They apply what they were, and as soon as they don't, it makes a lot of work for us. So, and these recommendations, I think, are really a good part of our work.
Just to clarify, you said 39,000?
Thirty-nine thousand plus cases.
Okay. Right. Okay, Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I've got a paragraph, Mary. It says, finally, to ensure the ongoing public accountability, it recommends the Board of Commissioners add the following duties. Our action today will establish that, or will that be a separate action?
No. No, it will not. We're only adopting the report. That would be something that, per the rules, would be referred to the legislative committee to work on.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. My point is also a point of question. I think this may be the first time we've gone through this process under the new rules. This report's been received and is now being submitted for us to formally adopt it in its totality. My understanding is that in the recommendations, there are recommendations with respect to activities or actions by third parties, such as the Friend of the Court. And then there is a recommendation for action by the Board of Commissioners, by the county. And the action by the county, by the Board of Commissioners, will go to the Legislative Committee for review and a further recommendation. We approve the adoption, the rest of the recommendations will stand as they are and be submitted to those entities. No further action required of us.
The only difference is the report now has the, one can argue the Board of Commissioners has adopted it versus just the Senate.
But there's no further action required of us with respect to the other recommendations.
But to clarify that one of the issues that I'll continue to advocate for is the funding of some of those activities, or we don't have to act directly on the report. You know, in 2018, 19, and beyond, you know, when we're talking to, one of the phrases that I didn't see in the report that everyone had awesome resonance with Commissioner Voorhees, said, in addition to the Friend of the Court, we should have a friend of the family, you know, who's really helping people navigate this system. As Mary said, you know, we all identified the best way to avoid a bench warrant is to educate folks to avoid getting, so a friend of the family would be very helpful. And of course, we either change somebody's job description or we add a new person to it. We all know how to do that. And of course, advocating for that increased capacity to make the system better. So, short answer, which I'm bad at, we won't talk about directly this, it'll be a footnote, this is where it was recommended, but there'll be ongoing budgetary opportunities and struggles to support the needed capacity in this regard.
Commissioner Womack.
I'm going to extend my gratitude to all of those that were involved with undertaking this issue. I had a few questions during this task force looking at this. Did anybody mention anything about driver's license that historically had been taken from some of these men for lack of child support? Did that issue ever come up?
That is an enforcement practice, but it did not come up in our meetings.
When we had a show up with some of these guys here, we often will, we will review the case and will often issue the warrant, and often a license suspension as well, and that gets their attention. But we really don't want to take their license if possible. It's easy to get back. And with the deputies going out, they'll be able to engage these individuals with warrants and to be able to make referrals to our office to help license back more easily. So this will be a way to reach those who need their licenses and get them more quickly. Help them get jobs.
Well, with contacting my community, I have an office in the heart of the urban area, and I have men that come in daily to talk about issues that affect our communities. I'm very shocked that with so many people upon that board, that task force, that driver's license didn't come up, because it's a major concern in our community, especially when we got guys who come back and say, well, it's hard for me to get a job without a driver's license. I was seeking employment, but with that, they really feel very handicapped by having their driver's license suspended. But as I said, it's a lot of great work in this. I'm definitely going to support it. I also wanted to ask, once this chart flow is sent, if it is accepted and legislation brings it back, a legislative board brings it back and all of this goes through, are there going to be any budget items that are going to be increased? Is there going to be any price tag with this, or none is mentioned in our report that I've seen?
There may be an issue of funding for contracting with the community-based entity to individuals who are eligible for show cost hearing. That's something we'll have to look at.
Okay, so there's no estimates at this time?
No.
Okay, once again, thank everybody for the great work. It's a beginning. Proud to see it.
Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you, Chair. Also appreciate the work of the committee and the report, the brevity and the, a lot of stuff that's in there. I also am confused a bit by the process and the application of our standing rules to this, what it means to adopt this. And it's confusing to me to hear that adopting it means we support the content of the report and the content of certain recommendations, but not other recommendations of the report. So we support the recommendations that don't affect the county board, but those recommendations that do affect the board directly, somehow we are not adopting, because those have to go to another committee. That is confusing and is a bit of a stretch to me and something that I'll continue to point out as we implement this.
Commissioner Tallon, the question of do you adopt it basically is asking the board, do you find the report acceptable? Do you agree with its finding, its recommendations? If yes, well, if you, well, yes, if you agree with that, if you think there's things that are wrong or that you don't agree with, don't know. It's as simple as that, as it relates to things that specifically need to be acted on by the county, those will be referred to another committee, and that's addressed in the second part of the resolution, which says that the, we start by saying that we adopt the report, and then secondly, that we refer the applicable recommendations to the Legislative and Human Resource Committee to undertake further review and follow-up on the proposed changes to the composition and duties of the Friend of the Court Citizens Advisory Committee. So that's, to me, it's pretty straightforward, that's what this means. So, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, almost, but first blush, just looking at this flow chart, it seems like it's already fairly comprehensive with plenty of opportunities along the way for compliance before a bench warrant is issued, before a hearing. I support this. It just seems as if possibly we're going to try to be a little bit more warm and fuzzy in the process of issuing a bench warrant, which I still think is going to be, I'm not sure if the numbers are going to go down because of this or not, the amount of bench warrant issued. Sometimes you look at this as a roadmap of how to get out of, you know, the process, how to avoid pitfalls and traps. So I guess my question or my comment would be, whatever we do moving forward, is it going to add any time to the process? Will it be a longer process and will backlog the courts in any way?
I'm simply going to, well, it won't be simple. One of the biggest things is, this is not about warm and fuzzy. This is about customer service, and there's a huge, huge part of this which is truly about our cultural competency. The courthouse, our procedures, we call them parliamentary procedures, they were invented in the dark past in a place called England. Most of our common law is rooted in England. It's a very Western European English process. And you add a few hundred years of American history to that, are not culturally competent, our courts are not welcoming opportunities. So you are absolutely correct, there are a lot of opportunities to engage. At the same time, there's a lot of barriers that are put to prevent people from engaging. This is truly focused on, and this is the beginning, as Commissioner Womack pointed out, we look at some of our work in eliminating or reducing disparities in prenatal care and disparities in live births, where we have much more deaths of children or babies of color, focused on that. We're approving a couple of contracts today to focus on that. We've been working on that for 10, 20 years to reduce those numbers. This is going to be a 10- or 20-year process to reduce these numbers, but it is, we're not going to reduce the hammer of the bench warrant, it's going to continue to be there. The hope is that we're going to make this process, again, as Commissioner Voorhees pointed out, a little more family-friendly. It truly, because again, I've never had the opportunity to go through this process for myself. I had my 25th anniversary two weeks ago. Please, cash is accepted as a gift.
Your wife's a saint.
Worse than a saint. Worse than a saint. And so all that being said, you know, this is not warm and fuzzy, this is real. If you remember last October, there were about 60 African-American men who came to us and said, what we did with the best of intentions wasn't the right thing to do, and they said, work with us to make something better. So there is that community commitment to do that. So again, do not call this warm and fuzzy. A little excited about that. This again is real, this is about, because the number one, back to advocacy for poverty, the number one way to keep kids out of poverty is to have two parents in a household, statistic after statistic. The reality is, too many households don't have that. So the best path to poverty is a single-parent household. This is helping those single parents, because we heard a lot of mothers and a couple of fathers say, do more against the deadbeat, who's not paying my support. And we heard a few of those payers saying, hey, you've got to work around this. So again, it's a long process, it's not warm and fuzzy, this is real.
Can I follow up quickly? Just one, I, when I say warm and fuzzy, I'd say, warm and fuzzy to me is the fact that the overwhelming majority, no matter what race, creed, or color of people, are complying currently.
Absolutely.
And so that's warm and fuzzy to me, that means they're doing, and if we can tweak it, fine. My point was, what's the bottom line? Are we going to actually see more people paying as a result of this? I hope, I hope that's the case. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
Yeah, I'm quick. I just wanted to emphasize that we have to stop taking people's driver's licenses. And trying to help them get it back just shows that once it's taken, just how hard it is for these men to give it back, because usually when it's suspended, you already owe money for child support, and once it's suspended, there's going to be some fees also along with that suspension to get it back. So it's just financially putting them back in debt, and it is just not working. So I hope that the task force will take a look at that, that that might be something that would become a priority, because when, we don't want to give anyone any more excuses for not, you know, paying and helping the mother and the child and supporting their child. And when I have people come in my office, I have to admit, someone taking your driver's license is not the end-all of why you're not paying, but it's too legitimate of an excuse for me to have to debate with young men about that. So I definitely want to support them in having their drivers not suspended and take it from them, if that's something we could work on in the future.
Okay, any other questions? Is that a hand? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to request a roll call vote.
Okay, very good. We will do that. I just want to again, thank the committee, especially Commissioner Bolkowski, for chairing that, and our Commissioners Corndyke and Voorhees. Commissioner Shivas was originally on it, she stayed on as a citizen representative. And thank you, Mary, for, I know you've put a lot of time and effort into it as well. So with that, we will call on Madam Clerk for a roll call vote.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt Resolution 61, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Stack.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yays, zero nays, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We move then to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is public comment. This is our second in order in duration. Is there any public comment today, usually on something different than previously addressed? I don't see any, so we will move to reports. For the initial report, we did receive the Kent County Land Bank Authority Review Subcommittee. I believe that was distributed to everybody, so you should all have that. That, per our rules, is noted as having been received. That act by itself is not substantive effect to the findings or conclusions of the report. So as with the Friend of the Court, I will ask that this be placed on a future agenda for a motion to adopt the report, and if applicable, refer specific recommendations to an appropriate standing committee. Other reports this morning, Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to give a brief update on the lead task force. We had a meeting earlier this month where we went through our recommendations and compiling them, and we'll be ready to report to the board before the end of the year.
Thank you. Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you, Chair. The downtown development authority met earlier this month. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there because of a day job commitment, but did want to make sure you were all aware that the DDA approved its part in the studio park project in the Arena South area. That was a event at that meeting. That project includes hotel, apartments, office space, a parking ramp. I think the second most significant piece is the theater piece, but to me, the most, what I think will be, end up being the most significant piece of that project is the public piazza that will be part of that, a place that will be planned for various people kinds of activations, and is really, I think, going to be the future of the Arena South area there. So that project is pretty cool.
Okay. Any other reports this morning? I see none, so we will move to Agenda Item 11, which are miscellaneous items. Any Commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share that I took the time yesterday to do the individual survey with the group that was engaged by our Subcommittee on that, and it was well worth the 45 minutes that I had a chance to answer his question. It is very methodical, and it's a phenomenal addition to the process, and I just wanted to let all the other Commissioners here know that I really believe it is worth your time to engage in that information collection. Thank you.
Excellent point, and we are headed into a process where that group interview can still take place. Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to briefly give you an update on Washington, DC. A couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Ponstein and I went to some meetings at the White House, and it was a very, very valuable experience. We were able to connect with members from the Intergovernmental Affairs Association and have direct contact to the White House and several departments. So it was a very worthwhile experience. I'm actually going to be heading back there next week to go to a meeting with the Department Chair Chow and talk about infrastructure. So that'll be exciting to see what kind of opportunities we have, and as a county too, and that is pretty important. Another note too, today we remember Congressman Vern Ayers. He has played a special role in my family. My mom and sister both worked for him, my sister in DC, and they have lots of great stories and memories of him, and he was just a great person that represented our community really well. a great person that represented our community really well and I just pray for his family and, you know, I'm thankful for his leadership and guidance and as we celebrate his life today.
Careful, there's a lot of open positions at the White House. If you're down there too much, it may.
I enjoy my role here.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. Seeing it's after 10 o'clock, I took the opportunity to speak then instead of just not speaking. That's all right. I just want to touch on base too about the Washington visit. We were joined by Commissioner Womack also and Emily. I don't think there was any slight there. Washington is an interesting place. It always has been, but I've often commented on just how it is. But the, putting all that aside, what political spectrum you're on, the opportunity for county commissioners to meet with White House staff is probably the first time that that's ever been done. And I think the current administration, and I applaud President Trump, to see that, you know, the boots on the ground is county government. And we had opportunities to meet with not so all the department heads, though Director McMahon from the Small Business Association showed up and Secretary Betsy DeVos also showed up. But it gave us, gave us a way to get a contact. A lot of things they hear are the lot of things that, you know, we have said that, you know, a lot of people don't think government works. It takes forever to get something done. What they want to do is streamline the process. If there's something in your county, your city, or your village that isn't working, a direct line to a staff person that it may not be the answer you want. It may be no, but at least you're going to get an answer, find out what the delay is and what the timeline is. So, valuable, I think in the long haul, if this is kept up through other administrations, this can do nothing but help people and government work better for them. Also, I want to just quickly shout out, I also attended the National Conference of Counties. I serve on three of those, three of their committees, one commission, one caucus, and then a standing committee. I got the letter today that I was reappointed to all three of those. I don't know if that was a goal of mine, but Commissioner Bukowski was talking about poverty earlier. I got a letter from the President of NACO and his goal this year for what he wants to focus on is serving the underserved counties addressing poverty. I know he's, he's from Texas, so in the beginning of December, he's going to have a kind of a roundtable mini-conference on poverty and what we can do and this country to work on that. So, in the positions I'm at, at NACO, they encourage me to attend these things. So, if you'd want to just ride along and be my co-pilot, you'd more than happy to join me, and I say that hesitantly, but it's all good fun. So, I could speak about a lot of things that happened at NACO. One thing that I did want to highlight is that NASA was there and with the eclipse and NASA was front and center for a week. Their, their big push is, and tell you that we're planning to go to Mars, they're saying by 2030, they're going to have a person on Mars. And what was, what I found fascinating, I had an opportunity to have a kind of a small break with a couple of members of their staff, is that every state in the United States has got some part in that mission to Mars, whether it's technology, software, equipment, and on and on. I was happy to see it, and they're trying to get the list of companies in Kent County that are a part of that. We have five of them. I think the one notable is Steelcase is involved in that. But, you know, NASA has always been criticized as just, it's all NASA, all NASA. They reached out on this project to make sure that this is a project that the whole country can be proud of and my hat's off to them and look forward to 2030. Hopefully, I'm not still a commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack?
Yes, I just want to thank Commissioner Breevy, Commissioner Poynstein for coming to Washington. I was there myself also, and it's just very vital that we are reaching out when we have opportunities, when we're invited to meet with White House staff, heads of departments for the Trump administration, so we could voice the concerns of our constituency. Today, we had a lady in a voter constituency that mentioned some of the tax cuts that are coming and we see the gravity of this situation. It's just very important that the White House did, does extend something like it did last week for Michigan commissioners to come out. It's just great that we had Kent County commissioners there that could speak for the county of Kent and what some of the concerns are of our population.
Thank you. Commissioner Mast?
I just want to, I'll put it in everybody's box, but an invitation to have Lieutenant Governor, to listen to Lieutenant Governor Brian Kelly and his wife, Julie Kelly, on September 18. I'm a member of the Wyoming Kentwood Chamber. We're going to have our legislative lunch that day. So, on behalf of that group, I would invite people.
Thank you.
Hopefully, get some people coming.
Thank you. Commissioner Tallon?
Thank you, Chair. Want to make this comment now because I didn't have the opportunity during the consent agenda, but when I started on this board 25 years ago, Kent County had not such a good track record on infant mortality, particularly for children of color. And we approved two grants, the Strong Beginnings Program, which has made a significant impact on that record and we're doing much better. And I want to recognize that work. And if you don't know what Strong Beginnings Program does, the great work they do, I encourage you to reach out to the Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bukowski?
Two quick things. Speaking of Americans with Disabilities Act and such, next Wednesday at the Kentwood Library, four to six o'clock is the annual disability anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act by George H.W. Bush. I think he was 41. So, thank you, Commissioner Corndyke. So, you've got Kentwood Library, a lot of fun, entertainment, and a little bit of education. And then just my, my quick tip of the hat to Congressman Ayers. There is no one person in this community by far who had more of an impact on our public transportation system than Congressman Ayers. And I've only been doing this for 22 years. He, he did so much on our community's behalf back when earmarks wasn't a bad thing and just, again, he is number one. Maybe Mr. Wegi is a close second and everybody else is distant third. And his advice to me was always, when I asked what I could do to help, he always said, "Advocate more." No lie. Again, in his quiet way, he needed, because he was such a lone voice in Washington. So, yeah, not, maybe on his side of the aisle, I'll leave it at that, but it was truly a bipartisan effort and we, he has been greatly missed. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see, oh, we've got a few more. Commissioner Voorhees?
Yeah. Commissioner Breevy covered it, that today, the family buries a man who was a man of all families, for all families. Yep, just mindful.
Okay. Commissioner Stan?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge our Health Department and Adam Lennon for a conference that many of us were in the other day on Health and All Policies Conference. Very, very well done and raised a lot of great issues. Thank you for that.
Okay. Anyone else? I see none. Real briefly, there will be this administrative search group interview with Gov HR right now as soon as we break up here. I see Amy Rolston in the back there. I assume that's why she's here. Make sure that we, those that are set up to go there, go there. The Executive Committee immediately after this meeting. Appointments, the citizen vacancies for various boards and commissions and committees, as you know, were posted and that is now open through September 30. If you know people, that would be good for boards, certainly encourage them to apply. And then you've heard a lot about former county commissioner, former Chair Vern Ayers, former representative, and I believe Emily, is it three today?
It's at 3:00 today at Eastern Avenue CRC.
Okay. So, if anybody wants to attend the funeral, that's when that is. Again, I'm not going to go through it again, but he just was certainly a great leader of our area and he'll certainly be missed. And then finally, just to keep Tom Dempsey and his wife Karen in your prayers as he is dealing with cancer. I know that it's, he's pretty weak, I think, but certainly we want to keep his wife Karen in your prayers as well. So, with that, I will go to Agenda, Agenda Item 12 for adjournment and call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Move to adjourn subject, call the Chair Thursday. Thank you.
Favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. You going to say today?